We are here at this point to hear any public comment. And Kathy, our secretary has indicated to me that we do not have any public comment. That being the case, we will recess until six o'clock, so about 10 more minutes before we start our meeting. Do I hear a motion from the board that we recess until six?
I make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion passes. We begin our regular meeting at six o'clock. Thank you.
Sure. I'd like to do the award.
Thank you, Charlotte. Joanna. And Matt, thank you for being here tonight with them. Matt Ross, the principal of Dudley Shoals Elementary School. As we move along, the next item is the approval of the agenda. The board's had opportunity to review that for several days. Do I hear a motion? We approve the agenda as it's been presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion. We approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And motion passes. Next item is the approval of the minutes. And we have two sets of minutes from the month of February. On February the 7th, we had a work session and the board's had a chance to review those minutes from that meeting, as well as some meetings from February 13th, which was our regular board meeting. That being the case, do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes as presented?
Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as presented, hours five B and five C.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And motion passes. Next on our agenda is announcements, and I'd like to call on fellow board member Mrs. Anna Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman, panel. On behalf of the Board of Education, it is my pleasure to make the following announcements for us, and some of them probably apply to your school, so if you want to make a note. March the 17th is an optional planning date, so that's important for parents, I know. And I'm pleased to announce that Kaleidoscope is now scheduled, and it will occur on which date? The 25th? The 25th, at seven o'clock, and it will continue from seven until it is completed. And I know the last time I was here, we made an announcement and showed the shirts, and we just have a wonderful time with Kaleidoscope, and I hope each of you will go out and will feel the joy of the Center to celebrate the work that these students have done in the arts on the 25th. March the 27th is a professional development day again, so that's another one that parents will want to make note of. And in addition to that, on April the 20th, our board will be visiting Hudson Elementary, Hudson Middle, and Granite Falls Middle School. And then finally, on April the 6th, that will be our next board meeting at six o'clock here. So thank you for noting these announcements.
Thank you, Mrs. Edwards. Dr. Fitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did. I wanted to ask, I'm not sure if they're here in the crowd or not, Randy Seldenridge, Donna Nichols, and Kaylee Elliott. Are y'all here tonight? And I told them I was going to mention them in our announcement section, but these are three of our staff members who are instructional technology leaders, and we had a big conference in Raleigh last week called NC Ties, and there were thousands of educators from across the state that were there. And our three technology leaders here led a session called Picture It, and the word "it" was IT capitalized. And it was standing room only. Every seat was full. People were standing around the room, and if you were outside, people were spilled out looking in just to get a glimpse of what was going on. And it's just wonderful to see our folks lead things like that at a state level, and I just wanted to recognize them and tell them a great job. Also, in the recognition vein, I wanted to let you know that we had our Battle of the Books competition last week. We had 10 schools that participated, and our top three schools in the elementary category, Sawmills, came in first place, followed by Lower Creek and Granite Falls Elementary. And in the middle school division, William Lenore Middle School were champions, followed by Granite Falls and Gamble Middle. A wonderful activity, and we're just glad everyone participated.
Thank you, Dr. Fitz. Next, we're going to have honors and recognations. We know many of you have probably come for the occasion of our event. So the board is going to stand up here, and we're going to congratulate the winners and the people that are announced, and we're going to have Mrs. Libby Graham, Director of Community Relations, to come to the podium and lead us through this portion of the agenda.
Your turn. Your turn. Huh?
Thank you, Chairman, panel, vice chairman Becker, board members, and superintendent Dr. Darrell Fitz. It's always a pleasure to recognize student artwork, not only because of its beauty, but also because it's also instructional. It helps our students develop skills in inventiveness, and language skills, and letter skills, and social skills, and it's just all the way around a wonderful involvement for our students. The first group of students featured in the Education Center Art Gallery are from Hudson Middle School, and the principal is Katie Elliott, and art teacher Kelly Woody. If you'd like to join us first, then we will announce students who are featured today in the Education Center Art Gallery. The first two pieces were actually group projects, and they were very interesting, and they've had grids, and then they put them together and they made this wonderful creation. So there will be several names called for the first two pieces. I'll start with Coleman Craig. These are all eighth graders at Hudson Middle School. Trevor Farmer. Alan Guge. Nathan Powell. Kaylee, we have one here, so wonderful, let's give them a round of applause. And Jesus Torres, also an eighth grader, so much of these here. And the second group, the second piece of artwork we had, the second piece of artwork, and you can see the artwork here on the sides. Raven Powell. Bryson Marshall. Connor Nichols. And Toby Kaiser. So we're very proud of them, they've been artistic, and inventive, let's give them a round of applause. Next, we have a piece by Jenna Stamper. Jenna is seventh grade. Congratulations, Jenna, for very proud of that piece in the Education Center Art Gallery. Celeste Evans, an eighth grader. Beautiful piece. Addie Filyon, a seventh grader at Hudson Middle School. Beautiful piece, yes. It's nice to have family here supporting these students. And Brynlee Lewis, the adult, so very striking, so congratulations to Brynlee, also an eighth grader. Let's give the Hudson Middle School students a big round of applause. Parents, come on out and take pictures, let's get, let's get your blind eye, we don't have to be blocked by someone's head, but you just feel free to get out in the aisle there, take a picture. in the Education Center Art Gallery, and that's Hudson Elementary School, and Monica Martin is principal, and Emily Al Daco is the art teacher, so I know, there's Al Daco is here, you want to come forward and show it to us? We will start with third grader Josie Widdin, so Josie, Josie here, yes, congratulations. Carson Hustedler, Carson is a second grader. Roxanne Owen, Roxanne Owen is in the fifth grade, love that sentence, great view. Cordell Preston, Cordell is a kindergarten student, so Cordell, thank you for being here this evening. And Joseph Townsend, Joseph Townsend is a first grader, that's the part that's beautiful. Now for Granite Falls Elementary School, we have fifteen placed on the wall, and this is a group of five. Courtney Saunders, and Courtney Saunders is here, principal of Granite Falls Elementary School, and Millie Heffner, and Miss Heffner, thank you for joining us. We'll start with Chandler King, Chandler is a kindergarten student. Chandler here. Ellie Stafford. Lily, Candice Wall, and Lily, also a fifth grader, she could be with us. Amy Drew, fifth grader. And Leila Kraski, first grader, so Leila, please. So we want to do a picture of this group. We'll put these on the Education Center website, caldwellschools.com. Now for Granite Falls Elementary School, we have fifteen placed on the wall, and this is a group of five. Courtney Saunders, and Courtney Saunders is here, principal of Granite Falls Elementary School, and Millie Heffner, and Miss Heffner, thank you for joining us. We'll start with Chandler King, Chandler is a kindergarten student. Chandler here. Ellie Stafford. Lily, Candice Wall, and Lily, also a fifth grader, she could be with us. Amy Drew, fifth grader. And Leila Kraski, first grader, so Leila, please. So we want to do a picture of this group. Yes. Yes, yes. You want to come forward, and we'll get your picture. We always like to recognize our students for their character, and that's part of the character education program. In February, the trait was kindness. These students stand out among their peers as being generous, friendly, considerate. They speak a universal language, recognizable and appreciated by all of us, kindness. And going back to what you said, Mr. Gerson, they would be a Let's just feature Hudson Elementary this week. That was on the, we'll put these on the Education Center website, cogloschools.com. Now for Granite Falls Elementary School. We have fifteen placed on the wall and this is a group of five. Courtney Saunders. Courtney Saunders was here, principal of Granite Falls Elementary School. And Millie Hepner. And Ms. Hepner, thank you for joining us. We'll start with Chandler King. Chandler is a kindergarten student. Chandler King. Ellie Stafford. And Lili, also a fifth grader, she could be with us. Annie Drew, fifth grader. And Leila Craskey, first grader. So we want to do a picture of this group. Yes. Granite Falls Elementary. Yes, yes. You want to go home later? And we'll get your picture. We always like to recognize our students for their character and that's part of the character education program. In February, the trait was kindness. These students stand out among their peers as being generous, friendly, considerate. They speak a universal language, recognizable and appreciated by all of us, kindness. And going back to what you said, Mr. Hurst, that they would be afraid of someone showing that kind of kindness. So we're going to recognize at the elementary level Jeremiah Quach. And Jeremiah is from Whittle Elementary School. And Christina Byerley, the assistant principal is here. So Jeremiah, if you would like to join us. At our middle school level, we have Jacob Otten. And Jacob is from Hudson Middle School. And Katie Elliott is the principal. Katie's here also, is a seventh grader. So Ms. Elliott, if you'd like to join us. And a high school student cannot be here, so we're going to try to recognize her. We also have students right now competing in career technical education statewide competitions. We'd like to recognize one this evening. We have others who will make that top ten mark and we will recognize Sam and April. So this evening, we'd like to recognize Leah White. Leah is a junior at West Cowell High School. And she was top ten in the state for principals of marketing for career technical education. So Ms. White. And Dr. Griffin cannot be here this evening. He's actually attending a concert with his daughter and marriage. She's performing, we understand that. And Erin Anis, who is the athletic director at West, is representing West Cowell. So Erin, if you'd like to come up and get a picture with her. Please, we're going to have Ms. Anis say because he is part of the next recognition. Remember last month, we recognized the female state wrestling champion. And tonight, we have the honor of recognizing some of our male wrestlers who were finalists in the state. So we will start with Wes Cowell, since Mr. Anis is up here. And Fernanda Tiniente is a sophomore at West Cowell High School. He is 113 pounds and strong at that. So he placed fourth in the state and is CHSAA two A state championship. And Rakim Smith. Rakim is a junior at West Cowell High School. He plays fourth at 145 pounds. So congratulations to you Rakim. Both of these fine young men were coached by Mr. Anis and also Dana Smith. So Mr. Smith, if you'll join us, we'd like to get, make sure you get in the picture. We have another wrestler who is a state finalist from High Brighton High School. And Courtney Wright is principal. She is with us this evening, as is the coach Josh Woodruff. So if you two would like to come over. We're very proud of this young man as well. He is the North Carolina High School Athletics Association three A state champion finalist and he placed fourth. Ross Quach. Ross is a senior. What a way to end that final year, Ross at the finals. 145 pounds. So we're very proud of him and his accomplishments in his wrestling career at High Brighton High School.
Okay, we are happy that you've been able to be here with us. If you want to stick around for the business meeting, we're getting ready to start that. Otherwise, if dinner is waiting for you or maybe some homework, now would be an appropriate time to leave. So thanks again for being here. Have a good evening.
We share a burden.
Okay, we're going to continue on in our meeting and I'd like to call to the W M Observatory Services Assessment and Andy Poole.
His statement identity. Chairman, Panel, Vice Chair Dr. Fitz, members of the board. I have just one item up for approval tonight regarding a rate increase for wraparound for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. This was discussed at the work session. You should have a copy. At this time, I am seeking the approval of the rate increase as presented.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the wraparound rate increase for twenty years 2023, 2024?
I move we make that increase.
Is there a second? Second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Next, Dr. Bill Griffin.
Sorry about that, I got a little excited. Chairman, Panel, Vice Chair Becker, Superintendent Fitz, members of the board before us this evening. Category A, human resources usual customary and promotion items require no action at this time. Assistant B, human resources usual customary action items, contracts in respect for equipment, motion to approve human resources usual customary action items contract as presented this evening.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the human resource services usual customary items for approval as it relates to contracts?
Chairman, Panel, I move that we approve the human resources usual customary action items as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Finally, Assistant C, human resources usual customary personnel action items as a substitute list in respect for request, motion to approve human resources usual customary action items as a substitute list as presented this evening.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the human resource usual customary personnel action items as presented that relates to substitutes?
I move that we approve these, I believe, 29 names to the substitute list.
That's the best we can do.
And we go thank you to those 29 people.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Griffin. Next, Assistant Superintendent, Chief Financial Officer David Johnson.
Good evening, Chairman, Panel, board members and Dr. Fitz. Tonight, I've got two amendments under item TMA, Budget Amendment Number Six for the State Public School Fund, in amount of $480,487. And Budget Amendment Number Seven for the Federal Grant Fund, in amount of $17,848. These two amendments approved tonight will bring the total budget for Congo County Schools
Okay, do I hear a motion that we approve Budget Amendment Number Six as it relates to state public funds? And also the Budget Amendment Number Seven, Federal Grant Fund, as presented by Mr. Johnson.
I move that we approve Budget Six and Seven.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. And I have Item Number 10B is the audit contract ending June 30th, 2023. That's from the same audit firm we've used for the past three years, Anderson Smith &amp; White. At the end of the audit contract, there's also the peer review for their firm that they recently had. With respect to the request that the audit contract we approved to see.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the audit contract to Anderson Smith &amp; White P L L C for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June? Is there a motion?
Twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. No contract yet.
Twenty twenty-three. For the audit in this, this fiscal year, financial.
I make the motion we accept this contract for the audit for Anderson Smith &amp; White P L L C.
Okay, is there a second?
I second the motion.
Any comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, appreciate it. Next, I'd like to call on our Superintendent, Dr. Don Fitz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I have tonight is the request for approval of the 2024-25 traditional school calendar start date. I want to stress again for the public that this is not this coming year. We've already approved the calendar for the upcoming school year. This would be for 2425 with the intent to give everyone advance notice of what those start dates would be so you could plan accordingly. The actual calendar will come out a bit later, but based on the feedback that we received from the board, what I'd like to put before you tonight would be that the first day for students would be a midweek date, that it would be August the 14th again of 2024. This is the year after next. And then the first optional planning day for teachers, just for planning purposes, right now it looks like it will be August the 1st. And the first required day for teachers would be August the 6th. And the rest of the calendar details we can provide, but we wanted to make sure at the board's request that we got this out to families and staff members as early as possible for planning purposes. Again, this would be for August 2024, not next year.
Do I hear a motion that we approve the start date for the year 2024, 2025? And that is the traditional school calendar.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion that we approve the 2024-2025 start date of August 14th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments?
We've heard back and forth on this calendar issue, but if I remember correctly, Dr. Fitz, this balances these semesters out to about 85 days on each semester, is that correct?
The calendar that we have right now, which I would say is in a draft format, but that calendar was built based on the feedback that we got from this last iteration of the calendar. I think it has 85 days and one in 87 in the other.
But it's allowing time to prepare teacher conferences in things that we're constrained within the present calendar that we're allowing to use.
And still, and still able to get out before the end of, before Memorial Day.
We just going to have to be careful with our messaging once we get this out, that we're going to get people confused between 2324 and 2425.
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes. Next item on our agenda is we need to convene to go to closed session. Do I hear a motion that we, oh, that's right, we do have one more board action. Motion to approve the 2023-24 Board of Education meeting scheduled.
Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, everybody's had a chance to review this. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now we are ready to go to closed session. Do I hear a motion that the board go into closed session?
Chairman, Panel, I move we go into closed session pursuant to the reasons listed on our current agenda.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? And motion passes. We will be in closed session. We do not expect any votes or activity afterwards other than adjournment. So have a good evening. So have a good evening. So have a good evening.
and we sent something out that if you see a social worker, I obviously want you to thank them for the work that they did. And Josh and the technology team, thank you, number one, for getting this room set up and the great stuff that's going on and what we know we'll be able to do here. But if you had a chance to come in a little bit early, we're showcasing from now on a school every board meeting night on the display with band or chorus or some type of an activity.